We'll go ahead and get started. We will call the November thirteenth, twenty twenty five, State of Education Board of Order. Welcome. Before we get started, we always start with a moment of silence. So he will join me as we prepare our hearts and minds for our first. Thank you. Okay, then I believe you will join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just and strong. All right, we have a treat today. We have a quintet from Pulaski Academy led by Director of Fine Arts, John Willis. So, Mr. Willis, I will turn it over to you. Mr. Willis, would you like to tell us about your quintet and your school? Is it on? Do we have the mic on?
Week or so, there we go. Wonderful. They learned this arrangement within the last three weeks. Let's see, how many of ours? Three of these singers were recently part of the Region Two All-Region Choir for Central Arkansas. And they're all super-strong singers and fantastic students and great people to work with. So I'm super proud of the Members of Academy Singers Choir. Thank you for allowing us to represent Pulaski Academy today.
Nicole, do you want to introduce the student that we have?
Hi, this is a student from the Arkansas School for the Deaf and Blind.
Hey, everyone, my name is Mike. This is my name sign here. And I'm with Arkansas School for the Deaf and Blind. And I'm a sophomore.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, it is such a delight to be able to have y'all here today, so thank you for coming. We're going to move on to recognitions, and I think, Mr. White, you are first up.
Good morning. Ross White, Director for the Division of Career and Technical Education. Today, we have some special guests with us, so I'm going to read you all a little bit about them and then let them introduce themselves to you. So in Arkansas, we recognize nine career and technical student organizations, which we call CTSOs, in our world that make up about fifty thousand student members in the state of Arkansas. These organizations align with our students' selected career pathways and provide opportunities for work-based learning, networking with industry professionals, and leadership development. They, these organizations are integrated within our career and technical education courses and give students the opportunity to lead, apply their skills, and gain real-world experiences through hands-on projects, competitive events, and leadership roles. Students develop the confidence, employability, skills, and career readiness needed to thrive in college careers and life beyond that. Our CTSOs inspire students to explore career paths, create programs of study, and connect with their peers, industry leaders, and business partners, turning classroom learning into a powerful life and career success. In Arkansas, our nine thriving career and technical student organizations include, and I'll read them all off. It is a little bit of, like we said yesterday, alphabet soup here, but DECA, Educators Rising, FBLA, FCCLA, FFA, HOSA, TSA, Skills USA, and the National Career Association with JAG. And each of these organizations offers multiple competitive events, leadership events, and work-based earning opportunities for our students. And these allow our students to compete on a local level, a regional level, state level, and international level, while also networking with business and industry at the same place of local, regional, state, and international level. So today, what we have with us is we have each of our organizations, one of their state officers, most of them being the state president of our organization. And then Arkansas is fortunate right now that we have three national officers, which means we have three students who have been elected to represent their organization on a nationwide scale. And some of those can be international because they include things outside of the U.S. So we were able to have two of them be here today. One of them has to fly out to DC here in just a little bit. We're hoping, wishing her best of luck with her flights as well. So I'm going to let each of them come up, introduce themselves, tell them where they're from, what organization they're with, and I think their goals beyond graduation. And we'll end with our two national officers as the last two to share a little bit about their roles that they're getting to do this year. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eva Hernandez, and I go to Southside High School in Fort Smith. And I currently serve as the state president for Arkansas DECA. And my future plans, I plan to major in biomedical engineering.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Wyatt Petrie. I am a senior at Nemo Vista High School. I am the state president of Educators Rising. And after I graduate, I plan on attending UCA to get a bachelor's in architecture.
Y'all can feel free to adjust the mic.
Good morning. My name is Taylor Peters, and I am a senior at Pigot High School. And I'm currently serving as the Arkansas FBLA's state president. And my future plans are to become a public relations manager with an emphasis on political campaigns.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lauren Carter, and I'm a senior at Valleyview High School. I'm the FCCLA state president. My future plan is to go to Washita Baptist University and get a degree in biology to one day become a dermatologist.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Julian Stacks. I'm attending Southern Arkansas University as a freshman, hoping to major in animal science, hoping to become a large animal and exotic vet one day. I'm the Arkansas FFA state president.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Kim. I go to Valleyview High School in Jonesboro, Arkansas. And I'm currently serving as the Arkansas HOSA state president. And my future plans include going to college, law school, and then becoming a medical lawyer, and then a judge.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lauren Curtis, and I'm a current senior at Cabot High School. I am the current president of Skills USA, and my future career plans consist of going to UCA to get a bachelor's in biology and then attending med school to become a general pediatric surgeon.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brenna Morris. I'm from Alma High School, and I serve as the Arkansas TSA state president. My future plans include becoming a biomedical engineer and doing tissue engineering.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eva Orr, and I'm a current senior at Heber Springs High School. I'm currently served as the FCCLA National President, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. I have the opportunity to serve as one of the ten national officers. Being two from Arkansas, my other officer, Logan Gwynn, from White Hole High School, is not currently here. We serve over two-hundred-and-sixty thousand members of this organization. And I, president, get the opportunity to serve on the National Board of Directors, which is an exciting opportunity that I get to bring the youth voice to. My future plans are to attend West Point to major in political communication, to hopefully be the White House Press Secretary one day. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Xavieron Sims. I have the pleasure and the honor of serving as the fifth president of the Jobs for America's Graduates Career Association. I get the opportunity to represent eighty-eight thousand students from California to the Virgin Islands. I'm from Pamplona, Arkansas. I get the opportunity to represent all these students because of you. Because of my specialist, Mr. Calvin Thomas, because of Dr. Sonya Mike Wright McMurray, Mrs. Janice Roberts, and Ms. Robinson, and Mr. Ross White. I get this opportunity to go across the nation and see thousands of students because of you, because of your investment into our CTSOs, because of your investment into these young people. I get the opportunity to do amazing things and impact our community. And I get to come back home every single week and say, "I'm proud to be an Arkansin." I attend Grambling State University, where I'm a governmental, heck, it's a long title, or a long major, governmental affairs and administration and international and diplomatic relations major. I'm proud to be an Arkansin, but it's okay in Louisiana. I thank you for allowing me to be here and allowing me to represent you on the national level. Thank you.
We're going to be voting for most of them someday at the national level.
And you know, I'll remind you all, you know, we've got fifty thousand members in our state, roughly. And that's obviously the top tier of it, but we are very proud of each of them and what they offer. And so with that, we'll take any questions you have for them, and we would appreciate a picture possibly, so.
What is tissue engineering? Yeah, y'all need to come up to the microphone.
With tissue engineering, what I want to do with that is I want to rearrange people's tissues to help their organs function better and to stop the growth and spread of cancerous cells, just basically to improve life quality for people. Yeah.
Just another day.
Yeah, just another day.
Basic stuff.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Feel pretty inadequate to ask them very many questions.
That's exactly what I just said. Yes, I'm so impressed with every one of you. Keep up the good work, and I'm confident we will hear from you again. We'll be watching.
I'd like to echo that as well. I'm very impressed. Today is a great day in Arkansas. And compliment all of you on everything that you've done, you're doing, and the things that you're going to do. When I look at you, it's hard not to think about access. It's hard not to think about the Learns legislation. It's hard not to think about the priorities that's put on CTE and the work that's being done, boosted to the ground by Mr. Ross, Dr. McMurray, Ken Ward, Mike Rogers. I can go on and on. Thank you.
I'll just make a quick statement. First, thank you all for being here and for representing Arkansas and doing it so well. You know, we often get asked about, "What's the next generation hold for us," right? And I can say with confidence that our future is so bright, and our state is going to be so well-represented, not just at the national level, but even internationally. And to know that we have a footprint in making a difference is something that is humbling and exciting. So if I was to tell you anything, I would just say, never stop working hard, never stop working towards your goals, and always remember, we're hiring. And when you're done, come back with your resume, because we'd love to have you be part of our team.
Let's get some pictures.
Yeah, because there's so many, that's probably.
We'll come down and meet you in a second.
Let's have everybody scooch in, since there's so many. And then we'll get one with the choir right up there.
All right, does anybody have any changes to the agenda? No? Okay, let's move on to the action agenda, and I think, Ms. Porsham?
Oh, Stacy.
Oh, Stacy, who?
Yeah, she can introduce it.
Did we need to do a resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, is that what you're saying? We skipped that.
Sorry. That's you.
Too excited with all the students. So first, the next item before we go into action is to do a resolution with the Arkansas State Board of Education declaring January twenty twenty-six as School Board Member Recognition Month. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our friends from the School Board Association.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Lizembe. I am the current president of the Sheridan School Board, Mr. Bragg's hometown, and also current president of the Arkansas School Boards Association. And I can say, my twenty-seven years on the board, this right here made me very proud to see our public school students being that successful and all of their aspirations. Because just as Mr. Leva said, you know, we wonder what our next generation's going to look like. Well, the future's pretty bright. I look forward to following these kids one day and my grandkids. And it's really important to me. So I wanted to thank you for this resolution to recognize the over fifteen hundred elected school board members across the state. I mean, it's a thankless job a lot of times, but my passion, that's where it's at. I started teaching thirty-five years ago, had taught for five years, and decided, "I'm not sure I can support my family." So I got out of that, and then now with the Learns Act, you know, I've written one of the articles in the Report Card magazine where, gosh, if this Learns Act would have been there whenever I was a young man teaching, I may could have afforded to stay in education that long. So thank you for your work. Thank you for all that you're doing. I'd just like to read the resolution that will be presented at our annual conference next month, and thank you for that. It says, "Whereas the quality of education continues to be a cornerstone of the state's prosperity and a key driver of Arkansas future success, and whereas education from the foundation for the future of our children and the growth and advancement of our society as a whole, and whereas Arkansas remains steadfast in its commitment to providing its more than four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand public school students with the highest quality education available. And whereas the dedicated members of Arkansas School Boards serve as the vital connection between the community and the classroom, ensuring that the needs of students are met and that the interests of our families are represented. And whereas these public servants, elected by their local communities, tirelessly advocate for policies and practices that prioritize student success, offering their time, expertise, and judgment without compensation. And whereas the Arkansas School Boards Association and the Arkansas State Board of Education collaborate to support and guide the state's more than fifteen hundred locally-elected school board members who make a critical contribution to public education. And whereas the month of January provides an opportunity to honor and express appreciation for Arkansas School Board members, recognizing the significant time, energy, and talent they invest in service to our schools and communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Arkansas State Board of Education hereby recognizes and salutes the members of local boards of education by proclaiming the month of January twenty twenty-six as Arkansas School Board Member Recognition Month." Thank you. Thank you. So we do have some invitations to our luncheon at our annual conference that we'll pass out to everyone. If you can attend, we would love to have you. Thank you, Mr. Leva. He presented last year at our annual conference, did a fantastic job. Appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to extend, you know, a lot of times people feel affected by things in their community, and they don't know what to do about it, and I often say, "Run for your local school board," because that is where change is happening for a lot of people. So thank you for your work.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all.
I would love to, I would love, so Secretary Leva and I have signed the official proclamation for you, and we would love for you to take it back, and we would love to get a picture with you as well.
Sure.
Excellent.
That is not me.
That is not me. I only have my portions, not yours. Okay, all right, so then I think Ms. Smith is going to present the Cleveland County waiver request.
You are. Good morning, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner. Action agenda item on the first thing on the list is Cleveland County School District is requesting a standards for accreditation waiver. And they flagged in August for having one student over in third grade. And so they'll need the waiver not to have a standards of accreditation violation, and that's what they're seeking today. Their superintendent, David King, is here to present for their district. Mr. King?
Good morning. My name is David King. I'm the superintendent of Cleveland County School District. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak to you today in regards to our waiver request. Give you a little background on what has brought us here today. Back in August, working with our elementary principal, we were one over in our district in the third grade. Normally, that will take care of itself in normal years because we live in a high-mobility area, that we have a lot of in-and-out kids. And I could be here today, and tomorrow, we would be under the nose by two. That's just where we live at. So we have been monitoring this situation since August, as I stated. Give you some feedback on the things that we have been doing to ensure that our teachers maintain the support that they need, that our kids are still getting a high standard of learning. We have implemented, we have two teachers in these classrooms. One is a thirteen-year veteran teacher, the other one is a full-year that has multiple licensure areas, which we believe is helping in these situations. But we have implemented some new strategies to help these teachers and these students. We have six different interventionists throughout the building and have scheduled more time for these intervention, interventionists to be in these classrooms with these teachers. And we've also, our instructional coaches have made a schedule out to be in the classrooms more with these teachers as well. And so don't want you to think that we're just coming here asking for a waiver and not realizing that being one over does constitute some more things from the district in need of support to ensure that these teachers and the students are getting the education that they deserve.
Is there any questions? So this waiver is for, you're one over, and this waiver is for one year.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that was a well-stated argument. Probably one of the better ones we've heard, seeking a waiver, because it showed sensitivity, even with just an aberration of one. So I commend you for that.
Is there any further questions?
I'll make a motion to agree with the waiver.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Smith to agree, a seconded by Dr. Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing them, motion back. Any opposed? Hearing them, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. White, we have you for the Career and Technical Education Standards.
So earlier today, when all the, I know, I'm sorry, when all these kids were over here, one of the things I noticed, did you notice their microphone etiquette, how they all patiently waited for the next one? What was great about that is I was talking to Director Ross White, and he was like, you know, I'm so proud of Sunny Till, and she's already left, and he's like, for a summer and the week. So I just want you to know, people at the Department of Ed are still teachers, right? For a week every summer, they pull these kids who are state leaders together, and they teach them leadership skills. They teach them what it means to be representing the state of Arkansas. They go through etiquette. So that is just, again, under Ross's leadership, under, like, they exhibited today things that they learned from people at the department who are also educators. So I just wanted to tell you what a great job I think that was.
We do good work. They do a good job. And we are, we always, you're always welcome to come to our State Officer Leadership Academy. We always do a luncheon, and you're welcome to join us at Arkansas Tech first week of June, so anyway. But today, Career and Technical Education Standards, I know we spent some time yesterday together, so we will quickly run through just a few items and then take questions and ask for approval with this. So as we discussed yesterday, you know, the division, our goal here is to ensure that our students graduate prepared for that enlistment enrollment employment, and we are working to align our pathways to workforce demand through looking at our labor market information specifically, but then how are we aligning our programs with the, what we call SOC code, with that standard occupational classification, and then our SIP codes, which is our instructional programming. So a lot of these revisions really are due to the Learns Act, and that's really aligning and focusing our students to meet the technical skills needed to fill the workforce needs in Arkansas that lead to high wage, high-demand careers. So this process involved numerous steps that we've taken over the past year and a half. The first piece is really us internally, as the department, reviewing the programs that we offered, and the SIP and SOC codes, as I just mentioned, that those were aligned to, to make sure they still were relevant, and then still meeting the demand and wage that we were looking for. So from those internal reviews, we were able to make recommendations of what needed to possibly be revised, merged, new items that needed to be created, or ones that we possibly needed to delete. So then from that, we started presentations last spring, and so we visited all fifteen education co-ops. And as I mentioned yesterday, we had every single school district but one in the state attend those sessions to talk about the revisions that we were looking to and what those would involve. And then from there, we created committees, and those committees are the ones that write our standards for our courses. And so our committee representation is really important to us, that we have K-12 educators, our boots on the ground that are teaching it, but at the same time, we have business and industry partners. So we have a one-to-one ratio for every K-12 educator that's there. We must have a business and industry partner. And then, of course, most of our programs lead to additional post-secondary education, so having post-secondary partners involved in it as well. So those committees met this past spring, and then this summer, we finalized it with a two-day meeting in July. I'd have kind of put the final stamp on these standards. And then they were available for our educators that weren't a part of the committees to provide us feedback from that time to pretty much the point we're at now. And then with that, there are seventy-four sets of standards that are in front of you, so I apologize for the reading, but obviously, there are a lot of them. This was a very big revision process for us. I will remind you all that this is not all of our courses. We have a total of a hundred and fifty-two different set of course standards. These seventy-four are the ones that needed the most immediate attention or were new ones we are creating. We will have additional ones that you'll see over the next year that will come through, hopefully not such a large batch for you. But that is kind of where we're at with a total of forty-eight different pathways as we go forward. And so when you look at that list there, that's each of the pathways, and then how many courses are within that? As a reminder, each pathway has a minimum of three courses, because we build on levels, and that's building the skill level from a foundational all the way up to they're ready to exit, enter the workforce, or ready to transition to that next phase of their post-secondary education goals. So with that, I will take questions and then entertain a motion to approve our standards as presented.
I know yesterday, I asked a little bit more about the AI and the computer science. I would just like to say, before we move on, that I would like to see, I guess, some of those second and third-level classes start to introduce AI maybe sooner rather than later. I think this is something that's stretching across all careers and is going to become, it's not going away. I think everyone knows that. And so I, I think teaching kids how to use it responsibly early is going to set Arkansas for success, and so, yeah, that's the only comment I have.
As noted, as I noted yesterday, I think the slide on embedded artificial intelligence is very important and deserves widespread communication.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. White. I know there's no argument that for years, we've been working to align industry, educators, to workforce. And I certainly want to appreciate you and your team, again, and these efforts align directly with our goal.
The only thing I, I want to just offer a compliment for just the intense focus on, on this. As I've spent time at my son's high school and talking with his friends and classmates, I've probably heard more people talking about this type of a career path more than ever before. And I don't think that it's any coincidence, and I think that it's because of the renewed focus and, or new focus. So congratulations on the success of that. I know that the numbers will soon bear out and be something for you to brag about. But you can feel it and hear it in the kids' comments on campuses.
Yeah, we, I ran it for this in case a similar question came up. So our six-twelve enrollment in any CTE course that we have from October of twenty twenty-four to October of twenty twenty-five, we have seen an increase right over twenty thousand students. Now, I always remind people, that's in seats, and so we have many students who can be duplicates there. We encounter numerous times because they're taking numerous courses, but that's a tremendous shift. We've also seen a tremendous shift in our pathways, where some of our traditional programs that are still very relevant and still meet some of our wage and demand, but like, we'll use healthcare as an example. It's always kind of been middle-of-the-road number. It is now our third-highest enrollment that we have in our healthcare pathways. That shift has happened very quickly, but we know part of it has been from the Learns Act and our focus on high-wage, high-demand pathways, and schools kind of having intentional conversations about where are they going after this? Like, how is this supporting our community, our region? And so we hope to continue to see more of those changes as we move along.
If there's no more questions, then I need a motion.
A motion.
First by Dr. Abbott, your second. Second by Mr. Henderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, motion passes.
Thank you.
Alright. Ms. Smith, talk about EFA accounts.
Alright, I think there's a presentation. So we are asking today to release two sets of rules for public comment. In the process for releasing, again, the public comment period is a minimum of thirty days. They go out for public comment once they're approved by the state board to do so. If there's any substantive changes during that time period, they go out again. Once all public comment is finished, they come back to the state board for final approval before they go to ALC, the Arkansas Legislative Council. So the two sets of rules that are coming to you today, one has to do with educational freedom accounts, and these are actually not a, these are, these rules were actually written over a year ago. They've been revised, right? So they are going through the process now because the rules have been updated and revised. And you did your work session yesterday on these rules and had asked several questions, but again, it defines universal eligibility in here. It establishes the fixed application window, revises payment schedule and administrative fees, and it clarifies qualifying expensive. So again, we anticipate a lot of public comment, and we'll go through that process. But that's one of the sets of rules we're asking for today. The second set of rules, again, these were existing rules that have been revised because of legislative changes and updates. It amended the definition of milestones, and it also clarifies payment associated with each of the milestones. This is the Adult Diploma Program, and so it is for adults who do not have a high school diploma, but they're not seeking a GED. They want the high school diploma. And so this sets up, the legislation actually set up how different organizations can set up an entity to be able to give a high school diploma, and these rules help assist, guide, and how that program goes. So we're seeking today to release both sets for public comment.
Can you explain for our new board members, if we don't vote to release them today, will they come back for the next month?
Yes, I mean, we would, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Woods, they would come back over and over and over.
Okay. So did you say there was gonna be a presentation?
That's your presentation. I hit those two sets.
Okay, could we have Dr. Smith come up here, because I do have questions.
Absolutely.
That's fine. I really don't have questions on the FAs.
And Mr. White's here too, if anybody has questions on the.
Good morning.
Alright, I did not do my homework before yesterday's presentation, so I have questions. I'm so sorry.
You're good.
Didn't anybody else want to go first? I don't have to go first.
You can go, I'll go second.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and I'm sure you can help clarify them. When we were going through, sorry. Alright, page twenty-one. I know this one wasn't edited, and I just didn't know if it had been called out. It is in regards to if a student withdraws from a private school after the quarter has started. And in section C, it says, "In the event a participating student withdraws from a private school and the school has not received the dispersment on behalf of the student, the department will determine any excess funds that should be refunded to the state." Why would, why if they haven't received funds, would they be refunding something to the state? I understand if they have received their dispersment, that's above, and B, but then C, it says they have not, and then it says, "But the department will determine any excess funds that should be refunded to the state, based on the number of weeks the student was enrolled prior to withdrawal." What am I missing?
Yeah, I'm trying to think. Thank you. I'm kind of, I'm listening to it, I'm trying to play it on, like, where does it fit in the, in the actual thing? Thank you very much. Okay, let me, let me read with you for just a second, if you don't mind.
Okay, so in section B, it says, "In the event a participating student withdraws from a private school and they have received a dispersment on behalf of the student, the department will determine any excess funds that should be refunded to the state." Makes sense? They've only been there for two weeks, gotta get some stuff back. But then in section C, it talks about when they have not received the dispersment, why is the department determining the excess funds that should be refunded to the state?
It's a great question, and I think it all, I think we kind of, we'll go back to the two A up there where it says, we're talking about any excess funds that were allocated to the private school. So that's, that's the main point, right? So I think these are just potentially opportunities to say, no matter, regardless of what the state's gonna look at and see, has the, has the school received any funds that they did not necessarily earn, you know, for services that they provided? I believe, the way it reads, and it does sound somewhat confusing about if you didn't get money, then you shouldn't, then there shouldn't be any excess there. So I'd have to kind of go back and through and just read through it a little bit, a little bit more closely. But the idea behind that whole section right there is that we are going to examine, anytime a student withdraws, we're going to examine whether or not the school has received any money additional to what they have, you know, for the services they provided. And so I believe that's what the section's about. Now, again, that particular section, I, you know, you make a great point, something we would have to look at, you know, further, and maybe in public comment, and look and see if there, you know, if we need to make some adjustments there. But yeah, absolutely. But I mean, I think, like I said, the intent of that section is just to make sure we're not overpaying for services provided.
Can you think of an example of when we would have excess funds outside of tuition?
Um, well.
And I'm specifically for a private school, because I know homeschool is different.
Sure. I mean, well, anytime that, because the way we do the quarterly dispersments, they happen right in the middle of a quarter.
Right.
Right? And so there is a potential that a student could, could, we could have paid the school because they were there their first three weeks of that quarter, right, and then they withdraw. So we pay them for that whole quarter.
Right.
Right? And so what we need to do is we kind of prorate it based on that nine weeks. So if they were there for three of the nine weeks, then, you know, the school only, is only owed three of the nine weeks that we were, you know, of that, of that quarterly payment. So then the school would then pay us, pay the state back.
Yes, and I have no problem with B. I'm just trying to figure out what scenario exists where C would become applicable, if they've not received any funds, sorry.
I, I read it as an accounting function, that at the beginning of the school year, that the, the school probably put in their accounts receivables or that they were going to receive those funds, and so they need something to, to release, to release that, that accounting, they're counting for the money.
Is that what that is intended for? I guess that's just where my confusion is.
No, I, I get it, and I'm like, to be honest with you, I mean, I'd have to totally just reread that and try to go through that again. So I'm not sure that I'm prepared to give you a full explanation of, of that section. Something that we will definitely mark and note as we, as we move into public comment.
Okay. On page twenty-three, so flip over.
Alright.
It's a new section. Basically, it says, this is talking about when people are being removed from the program, and it says, in C, "The department may immediately remove any participating student from eligibility for EFA if the department determines that," and then it goes down to number three, "is found to have committed fraudulent conduct." Is that just in regards to the program or in general in life?
It's to the program specifically. I mean, obviously, there's your EFA rule, so the only thing we're talking about here is, did you, were you fraudulent in
What we did.
the EFA program?
I assume that's what it is, but it's very open-ended.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the other law side of that thing. It's like, we got enough.
Okay, and then the other question I have is on page thirty-five. It's the new section, and it talks about an appeal being received within fourteen calendar days. Does this allow for interim meetings to be called? And here's where I went with this. It's July, we've determined somebody's ineligible and they want to appeal that, but we don't have a meeting until August. Does this allow us to call for, like, interim meetings to be able to hear an appeals process?
I think you're, you're always allowed to call an emergency meeting at any point in time.
Okay, just to be able to hear something like that. Okay. I'll turn number ten to Central. Okay.
Alright, so I too did not do my homework before yesterday, but it's always helpful just to hear all about it, the review actually.
Sure.
Okay, so my question, my first question is on page three. Section seven, where it talks about educational field trip. Educational field trip means a learning experience that, A, takes place outside the traditional classroom setting that satisfies the following. So how does that apply to homeschoolers? I don't think that they have a necessarily a traditional classroom setting, or is this not to?
It's just, it's providing a frame of reference, you know, that if this was a field trip that is commonly used or that's commonly taken from, in a school, then at that point, then that would, we would consider that part, a part of an eligibility of a field trip. So it's what it's doing, it's just trying to help define a little bit, so we just can't do anything, right? That there's, that we're putting some kind of a context to what the field trip was designed to do. What's the educational benefit of that field trip?
And I guess my argument there would be that homeschoolers are not in a traditional classroom setting.
Yeah, and so I don't think it's, yeah.
Is there, is it all a field trip? Anyway.
No, yeah, I don't think, yeah, certainly. The intent's not to limit what they can or cannot do, right? Because that's not the point of the law or the EFA program, but it is to put some context to what is an allowable expense to be paid for by the EFA program.
Okay, fair, fair enough. Then my next question, because I'm page five. And this, and I, it seems like I'm just harping on expulsion, and that is not my intent. But it's section thirteen, where it defines expulsion as a period of ten days for conduct and violation of the school's student discipline policies. So we talked yesterday that if, you know, that a student could be released from a program if they are expelled from the school.
Correct.
And that we would capture that information on the quarterly cycle of where the student was no longer on the roll of the school, and we would ask why, and then say expelled.
Correct.
But if, if it's a ten-day expulsion, is there a possibility that they would still be on the rolls at the end of the quarter, and we wouldn't know that they had been expelled?
So tell me again, tell me where you're reading that? Oh, it's thirteen A, I see it, right there.
Thirteen A, yeah, yeah, kid gets expelled, yeah, week three, they're out for two days.
I think that, again, the intent there is to make a, a distinction between suspension and expulsion, right? A suspension can be three, four, five, six days. That's not gonna remove you from the program. Typically, an expulsion is longer, right? It's, you're permanently removed from the school. And so I think And so I think that's just basically, again, a, tying a little bit to the public school ten-day rule of attendance, but also to, to just ensure that it's not just a, um, a shorter suspension, right? And so we're just exp, we're, we're in the rules explaining, this is what we would consider expulsion. You've been pushed out of school for longer than ten days, which typically, with that point, would say, you're probably not coming back.
Right. Well, and as long as, you know, there's a high level of confidence that we will be able to capture that event, whether it crosses the end of the quarter, or it happens early in the quarter.
I, I feel confident that the schools are going to, are going to report accurately. Um, you know, certainly, there's lots of ways that schools work around that situation, you know, with, with withdrawals versus expense, you know, expulsions and those type of things. And so, um, you know, expulsion is a pretty severe penalty for something. And for a school to issue an expulsion, typically, you know, there is something pretty egregious that's happened. And for that reason, you know, we will ask that question, and most schools are going to be, I, I can't imagine a scenario where a school would not tell us that a student was expelled.
Right, right. Okay. All right, that's, that's it.
Okay. I have, uh, you know, something broad and something specific. And so, and, and they're not, I don't know if they're questions or just requests for clarifications. But on the broad note, the, since the, the workshop yesterday, which was loaded, lots of great information, it was a fast train, and I felt like I was on the platform watching a fast train. But the, uh, since then, there have been, uh, public communications, you know, asking questions about the particulars that I hadn't heard before today. So, uh, I guess my clarification is hearing Dr. Stacy Smith's outline of the process, that inevitably, we're going to have time to talk about things that arise, like during the thirty-day public comment period, and then, you know, before any gross approval.
Correct.
Am I correct on that, Board? That's your understanding too?
Correct, so if we, if we release today for public comment, and there are substantive changes, those will go back, get changed, and then they'll recome back to the Board to then be re-released for public comment.
Okay. So that will make today easier, uh, because we don't have to feel like we're, uh, at a desperate last moment, moment. So-
Let me clarify that. So if there's substantive changes, they don't come back to the Board yet, they, they'll go back out to public comment again? They don't get approved to go to ALC?
Until they come back.
And for final, until they come back to you. So once these go out, we'll be getting regular public comment. If we feel like there's public comment, even comments that you made today, there are people taking notes. They may say, oh, that's an area we've got to clear up. Some of it's just, for clarity, it didn't really change anything. That's not substantive, it would come right back to you at the end of the month, and we'd say, we're ready to go. If it's substantive, it would be sent back out again, we'd be hearing more public comment on that. And so when it comes back to you, we'd be coming back to you saying, these are the final rules, and it would still require your vote approving it for it to be able to move forward.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you. So that helps us pace this out.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, and so more particular then, sometimes when you read something, it's hyperbole, sometimes it's just catching something that was missed. And so in this particular case, concerns have been voiced, um, about team sports and relation, in relationship to EFA, uh, private to public, presumably. So I was wondering if you could clarify that bit of content? And, and then if the Board has other things that they've heard through the, uh, messaging that, this week, it'd be a good time to bring it up.
Well, obviously, it's not my job to comment necessarily on the rules, you know, because the rules are presented as you, as they currently stand, and these, the rules that are being presented to take out to public comment. There is, the, the team sports have been disallowed as an eligible expense. The beauty of the process is that now they go out to public comment, and, and we'll see how the state views that particular, um, part of, of the rules. And certainly, we will make the adjustments as necessary. But at this time, the way the rules are written, that's, you know, that, as far as the team sports, that's the way the rules are written. You know, and why and hows and all that, that's a lot of backroom talking and a lot of discussion with just various, you know, various people throughout the state. And, uh, and felt like that was a reasonable request at this point. Um, now, when the, with the addition of the legislation that capped the twenty-five percent, uh, for extracurricular activities, there may be some room to, to, to work with that a little bit, just because, um, you've already capped it, as far as the money, the amount of money that could be spent in that area. So maybe then that, maybe that becomes an unnecessary piece of the puzzle. But again, that's for the state to decide, and for the public comment to, to be heard, and find out kind of where we're, where we land on that issue as a state.
Can we, can we dive into that a little bit?
Sure.
Let's talk about the backroom talk, and specifically, the why. Why, why would we, because I, when you read, when you read the, the definition of ex, twelve A, the definition of extracurricular activity.
Yes, sir.
It's extremely hard to read that six-sentence definition of extracurricular activity, and not picture team sports, uh, when you read that. And then, for some reason, we specifically, uh, eliminate team sports. So let's talk about why, why would there be a rationale?
I, I think originally, the, the reason, but this, I think originally, that section was there prior to the twenty-five percent cap. So I think, again, there's a little bit of discussion that, you know, you kind of have to play with that. But when the original discussion was there for the team sports, it was somewhat to modify some of these travel teams, elite teams, some of those types of things that become very, very expensive. And without the cap, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the money that EFA would, you know, obviously is there to help educate a child, could, could have been spent on travel teams, elite sports teams. A lot of those types of things using up a, a, a higher percentage of their money for what we would consider probably not the intent of the EFA program. So that, that was the original reason that it was put in there, okay?
But I think the way that we've crafted it, it, it might go too far. I, I, I could get behind that rationale, and say that if you, if you are on a, you know, a separate travel team that has no association with a school setting at all, um, that's, that's kind of your own-
Sure.
Hobby.
Correct.
We'll call that a hobby. But when you want to participate in team sports that are under some umbrella of a school, that is more traditional and, and regular part of a student experience in, in school. And so maybe we could rewrite the exclusion to include some language that if it, if it's a, you know, team sport that has no association with a school, you know, uh, or whatever, to, to try to cut that out, I would be, I would be a little more open to that. But I, I feel like as, as it's written, it goes a little too far, because if, if, uh, I, I just, I just don't like us excluding, kids from being able to be a part of, uh, well, the funds being utilized to aid a student in being a part of a regular-
Sure.
-team sport out of school.
And I think it's a point well taken, and I think it's a point that as we can, as we, as it goes into public comment, I'm sure that we're going to have several comments related to this particular section, and certainly, we'll take those under advisement to see if there needs to be a substantive change to the rules at that point.
My proposal might be that we spend a few more weeks honing that in before we release this out to the public to create that confusion. I, I've also heard that, I'm not sure that this type of exclusion was the intent of members of the legislature that passed the law. They're concerned that this doesn't align with what they were thinking when the law was passed. I understand that, and I, I hate for us to put something out there that stirs a pot, uh, of confusion and potentially chaos that, that we don't have to stir. I, I would, I might would propose that we hold that back, rewrite that a little bit, and then see if there's a different response, that, no, 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 we don't want you paying for, uh, extracurricular activities associated with traditional school setting. Then we might could read-
Sure. And certainly, that is the, you know, that's certainly something that as this Board can, you know, can vote on today, and we will certainly go back and take a second look at those things. Absolutely.
Will there be any, on that note, will there be any requirement for schools to have to carve out in their accounting, like, that we know that EFA funds aren't going towards school activities?
For private schools? Now, private schools, again, you know, they're, as far as what they include in their tuition, is, you know, that's going to be up to them.
Okay.
Right, so.
But what about a homeschool student that might be participating even at a public school? How would, how would that student be impacted?
Yeah, that's a good example.
So there, there are multiple laws that govern homeschool, okay? And there are other laws that allow for students who are homeschooled to take courses at a public school, and the public school is getting funding through another source. And so there are multiple different ways for that to happen. It does not prevent a, a, a private school student, or a homeschool student, from playing sports. You know, the Tim Tebow laws and things like that. Like, those are all still in effect. One, one thing I will note about these rules, we're never, this month, next month, two months from now, not going to hear from somebody about them. Right? We're either going to be too tight, or we're going to be too loose. It, that, that's a guarantee.
I don't disagree with that, but when, when the people that I'm hearing from are, are the people that wrote the law, passed the law in the legislature, and I can tell you, in three years of being on the school, on, on this Board, I'm not sure I've heard from very many legislators about rules that we were writing about the laws that they passed. But I have heard about this. So this struck a nerve, I think, with some members of the legislature, and-
Well, again-
They, they are not, I would not put them in the category, the description that you just gave, of we're always going to hear from people. These, these, these are the, the hundred and thirty-five people that voted to make this the law. So I think that, you know, that's, that's-
Well, and, and as, as the State Board, you guys have the authority to say it goes out for public comment, or it doesn't.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's correct, but, you know, I've learned twelve months in now that the onus is on me. Uh, and I should have presumed that, and I'm responsible, being a member of the Board. But I, I would say that, that it was a pretty cursory flow yesterday through the, the eight bullet points. And, and certain things didn't come up, and that's on us, or it's on me. But I guess I'm just concerned, Dr. Smith, that, um, it was as if there was, we didn't want to go there. But yet, to Mr. Woods' part, point, and you seem to agree when you said, yeah, the next thirty days are going to be interesting, the next thirty days could be hot, things will be discovered, and the volatile ones especially. Well, athletics are always volatile, so just using that as the example. Then, I left the room yesterday unawares. It's on me. But isn't it your job to kind of warn me that we're, that they're, we're going to be walking into fire?
I'm not going to deny the fact that we didn't try to hide anything. Obviously, the rules were there, and we're certainly, you know, uh, we believe that these rules were written. Did we think that was a substantive piece, it was part of the extracurriculars that were there? We did talk about extracurriculars, and the fact that we defined extracurriculars. And so I think we did touch on that, uh, role about where extracurriculars fit, and kind of briefly went over those, that, the definitions that were in the rules. So, um, you know, whether or not we should have gone to that particular section, spent a little time, I think maybe we can, we could probably debate that back and forth, and what's, what's, you know, obviously, we had a limited amount of time, and, and at the same time, you know, we could have gone through, we could have spent the whole day literally going through the way that this thing was written. So obviously, we had to make some judicious decisions apart as of, to what-
And it's not personal, this is a-
No, I understand that, I understand that.
Darrell v. Darrell, but it's really kind of Staff Board, you know, understandings as to how much information, um, were to be, uh, briefed on in a workshop.
Sure. And, and it's fair.
Is there a-
Your turn.
I tried not to. Um, good morning. Um, the one thing I will say, and I, I would request, is that, um, you consider before not allowing them out for public comment is the, the delay in the process that that creates. Um, as you stated, there's a hundred and thirty-five legislators, um, and, and we've heard from one or two, we, we may have heard from one hundred, and trying to balance the, the desires of some versus the desires of other, putting them out for public comment allows us to continue having those conversations, and also hearing from others, from parents, from concerned citizens, from, uh, school officials, from homeschool families, um, as to what their thoughts are, so that we, that is the purpose of the public comment period, is for us to have those discussions, make changes if appropriate, and then bring them back to you for final approval. If we don't release them for public comment, they're out there, but then we are not going to be able to engage in those conversations. We're not going to be able to accept public comments from, um, the public in general, because if they're not in an official public comment period. And, and so they, it, it makes it very tricky for us. And so I would just request that you consider allowing them to go out for public comment. We'll get that feedback, we'll have those discussions, we may go out for a second or third public comment. That, to me, i- is more true to the intended process than to not release them, have conversations with legislators, make changes. Do you kind of see my point?
I do understand your point. I, I, I would say this, in the time that I've been around, I don't know that we've ever not released on a first vote rules for public comment. I would anticipate, though, that the public, that rumors begin instantly, and when we put these out there, it's going to, it's going to set in that we're writing rules to exclude team sports, schools from receiving EFA funds. And it would, it is harder to undo that in the public rumor mill than it is to just not start it. And so my, my opinion would be that it is worth the delay to not start that rumor, to set, what I, what I find concerning, what I hear maybe another Board member or two find concerning, what high-ranking legislators who voted on the law find concerning, to maybe not start that boulder rolling downhill and try to stop it thirty days from now, or sixty days, ninety days from now. I would rather us amend that, not start that rumor, and have the public discussion about whether we should do the opposite.
And we can have that public discussion. Again, it, you not releasing them from public comment, and you all making public comment, or your, your intended, um, or requested changes to the rules, doesn't mean that we'll bring them back thirty days from now, and that you're going to like them then. Uh, I mean, that's just the point of the public comment process, is to be able for us to engage in that, to put them out there. If you don't allow us to release them for public comment, we can't put them on the website, we can't, um, send an email out to all the school districts like we do when we release them for public comment. To me, that is hindering the process more so than it is encouraging it. Um, of course, that's still your decision on which to do, um, but I, I don't feel like that's going to get us any closer to where we want to be. When you release these for public comment, you are simply voting to release them, not that you endorse the, the rules as they are written, not that you are not also requesting that changes be made, you are simply releasing them for public comment, and that will be the communication that is sent out via email, via commissioner's memo, in the newspaper, because we have to post an ad on that, is that these are proposed department rules, subject to revision, and open for public comment, and, and informing everyone on how to share those public comments with us.
How are decisions made on what public comments or Board comments, um, changes are actually made?
That's an agency decision. We collect all of those comments, we meet as a team, discuss what is appropriate, what's not. And, and then ultimately, that's why we have to bring it back to you for approval. And we have to respond to every public comment that is made to us in writing. Here's the comment, here's whether we decided to make a change as a result or not.
But I do want to make sure that I understand, because I believe it's in statute, it is the State Board's responsibility for the rules. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, right?
To approve them, yes.
To approve them.
Yes.
So, and I'm not trying to be an inhibitor, but if we don't like the way that they look, we keep sending them back four, five, six times.
You can do that.
Um, yeah.
I know, you don't want that, I'm just saying.
Like, we don't have to wait a month either. I mean, like, we can, you know, you work on them a week or two, I mean, we could look at them and have a meeting, I mean-
I think, I think the goal here, to Courtney's, to Courtney's point, is to start the conversation. Releasing the rules starts the conversation. And I, and I understand, it's like, hey, if we can avoid something that we probably know is going to be a pretty hot conversation, maybe we should do that on the front end instead of the back end. Right? And, and that, that's legitimate. But we got to, we got to start the conversation, and by you pulling them back, the cat's, you know, to your point, the cat's already out of the bag. I mean, it's already been out there. So at this point, we're not going to keep the rumor mill from happening, the rumor mill's already gone. So might as well, at this point, let's just start the conversation with the rumor mill, if we have to do that, and let's address them with truth, and let's address them transparently, and let's just get after and go out, and, and do what we need to do to make sure that we get a really good set of rules that, you know, that we can live with, that you all can approve, that the State War, and that, that's going to continue to make the program transparent and accountable to the, you know, to the taxpayers of Arkansas.
Well, for the record, you know, Mr. Wood makes a great point, and expressed it very well. It's great, great reasonableness. But, um, you guys are swaying me on the basis of expediency. Sometimes you can get stung by expediency, so that drives it down to the level of trust. And I want to have full trust. I just felt like I was, uh, rushed yesterday, so I still go back to the role of the workshop as to how to prepare for a Board meeting adequately. And so I, I want to just increase trust that there's no railroad, no railroading down of things that we could have been aware of, but we were not made aware of. That, that's my- That, that's my deeper point. But if, if, that's why I asked at the very beginning from Dr. Smith, Dr. Stacy Smith, that if the process allows for more deliberation, maybe even some reconstruction, then we'd have to, then we have to start. But, um, Jeff, you know, says that it's so hard to undo rumors, and we get sucked into it as if we're great with everything, because they've been released by us. And we have looks, then it makes us look like we have to backtrack and change our mind when it caught us from behind.
Okay, well, definitely hearing you today. Um, I think if, if the opportunity or the pleasure of the board is to table those rules for the minute, let's maybe do another work session or something to go through, bring some examples for you. We don't want you to feel railroaded, we want you to feel like you're, you know what you're voting on. So, um, we can table it, if that's the pleasure of the board, so I'm going to defer to you for that. And then, um, we can separate the ask for EFA, so if you guys want to table that, or pull it, or, we, I mean, do you want to table it?
Well, I, a quick question, was there an opportunity, like an open opportunity for people to already help with the construction of these rules? Like, did we go to schools, or was this just an internal department draft?
In, internal, going out to the public would be when, yeah.
But I, okay, I didn't know if we had committees that we just regularly went to, and so that was my ask.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Smith.
When they come back, if we disagree with the rules, I understand that we're not endorsing the rules by releasing them for public comment. At what point do we get an opportunity to influence the rules, or, uh, I know we could always vote against them if we don't, and, um, but, uh, um, uh, my concern is, we, they go off the public comments, they get reviewed, they get adjusted, they come back, and then we're expected to just approve them.
So I think, I think, I think this is probably warranting another work session, where you guys feel more prepared going into the work session, where you can ask more deliberate questions, give feedback during that time, and, and that's part of that process.
Okay, that's fair. To safeguard you, Stacy, is, um, backwards mapping from when they really have to be sound and solid and in effect, you know, is a one-week, two-week, three-week, four-week delay, is that jeopardizing your endpoint on a calendar?
Yeah, w- it, as soon as that we can meet on these rules and get them going, because there's still a bigger process. When these go out to the public, even when this board gets to the point where you're comfortable releasing it, we're anticipating a lot of public comment, we're anticipating some more changes. I'm not thinking it's going to be a thirty-day public comment, I'm thinking it's probably going to be maybe one or two, I mean, two or three rounds. Um, and so when you just think about, then it has to go to ALC for, for them to look at it. So we're still pretty, a, a few months ahead, but we, this would probably be an opportunity to set up a meeting sooner than later, so that we can get these out.
Is it possible to involve some of the concerned stakeholders here even before we redraft a?
That's, that's what public comments are, so.
Yeah, that's the purpose of public comment, and, and to Jeff's point of the ball rolling, I mean, this has already hit social media. So, um, you know, it's out there for parents, requesting parents to review it and make comment, and I just want to reiterate, if these are not approved or released for public comment, we can't accept the public comments. And, and so we will have to let parents know to delay them sending in comments, um, until the board releases them officially. And so, um, it's not that we can't put them out there because they're public information, they are on the, the website with the agenda for the board. Um, it, it just creates a notice issue, and it creates, again, the thirty-day timeline, and so if we do want to delay, table them for, say, two weeks, have another workshop, discuss some of these specifics, um, we're just going to have to make sure that we communicate and notice that very well, so that when parents are submitting comments, it's during the public comment period and not prior. Um, not that we wouldn't consider them, but it just creates some issues for us, but.
How about this idea that we would be able to, as, as a hypothesis, uh, no, as a proposal, no, as an idea? Um, the, that we, that we do play ball, we release for expediency and to get the comments coming, but that we have a special workshop next week, where we get to be, where we get to more fully express ourselves and ask our questions more deeply, in a better context, alongside the, the public comments that are coming in. We, could we do it that way, and would the, would our board, would the board be okay with that pro, that approach?
Yeah, and if I can add in there, we hold a public comment hearing for every set of rules, so a chance for anyone who wants to to come in person. Um, I'm going to throw my legal team out there and say, we'll do that, we might do two of those, um, one during the day, one after five o'clock, so that we can allow parents sufficient time to come and make public comment. Um, board members are welcome to come to those public comment hearings, and then we could have a work session to discuss it after that hearing, so that you all can consider all of the public comments that were made.
Well, there may be no second, there may be a nay vote, but I could, I would move that we, uh, release the rules for public comment if they're accompanied by a specially-held workshop for the State Board of Education, uh, in the very near future.
I would second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dr. Arnold to release for public comment contingent upon a work session for the state board within the very near future. You want to say within the next, before the next board meeting?
Before the next board meeting.
Before the next board meeting. Um, seconded by Dr. Abbott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Respectfully, no.
One aye. Hearing only one, motion passes. So, let's move on to.
Hang on a second, I've got adult diploma rules. There was, there was another, there was another set of rules in there.
Yes.
Um, so the adult diploma rules, um, again, these were existing rules that had some revision due to legislation. Um, it's about a program for about adults who do not have a high school diploma, um, and they are not seeking a GED, but they want that high school diploma, and so it's a program specifically designed for them. So I would ask that those be released for public comment.
Make a motion to release those public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
I have a motion by Ms. Hunter.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Henderson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
For the record, Mr. Wood was very emphatic with aye. Um, hearing no opposition, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, the la, well, yes, one of the last action agenda items is for reapproval of the twenty-twenty-six State Board of Education meeting date. So if you'll remember, we approved them last month, and then after we approved them, we realized that two or three of the dates were actually wrong. They were not on the date that we thought they were, and so they're basically held on the second Thursday of every month. Every, I'm sorry, I'm taking your spot, but that's what it is. So we just went through and made the corrections for two of the, two or three of the dates, so we just need a motion to approve those in a second again, so.
Before, before we move, I would like to bring up a slight discussion, given the fact that we're about to conclude our meeting after an hour and a half, about going to every other month meetings.
Oh, I have that idea.
I know that this was brought up by staff probably about a year ago, and I think maybe our agendas were a little more robust at that time, but they've grown thinner, and, um, I just.
And if there is, I mean, we always have the ability to have a emergency or something in between.
I kind of like the ideal of, to Mr. Wood's point, you know, like, we had workshop meeting yesterday, and the months that we have a light agenda, perhaps having a workshop meeting one day instead of, you know, a compound of two days of, uh, meetings.
Do we have the ability to, I want to say cancel a meeting, but do we have the ability to hold these dates, but then actually meet every other month, but hold the date for a work session?
I mean, you do. Um, I think once you put it out there, as these are our adopted scheduled meetings, um, you know, some people may rely on those, and so to, to Mr. Wood's point, Metterso does set six established meetings, and then you could call special meetings, because those require notice, et cetera, but the converse is also true. If you set a meeting and the agenda is light, then we could cancel the meeting and postpone those items to the next month.
I'm going to try to stop using the new excuse, but I'm going to use it this one time. I've been to two meetings, and both times we've taken actions on things that we did, where we voted against, uh, exemption last time. I think the conversations we had here, um, granted, I haven't, this is my second meeting, um, and all of our times were valuable, but my concern would be, if we don't meet on a monthly basis, does that send a message that the value of this board, or the impact of this board is, is less? So I would, um, not to get ahead of the vote, but if it is a vote, I'm going to vote that we continue to meet monthly.
Just throwing it out there is another option. You, you could adopt the dates, and, and to, you know, there's lots of requests for work sessions. You could do a work session in the morning, and the meeting in the afternoon. It just doesn't give you as much time in between to, you know, kind of digest all the information and then vote, but whatever you adopt, we can make changes as, as necessary.
It feels like this is worth a further discussion, because I'm also, I've only ever met every month for six years. Um, and I'm just hesitant to put that forward for a vote, not understanding the full impact of it, so can we table this to next month? We'll have some discussions, and maybe we can come back with a proposal.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, then we'll do that. Do I need a motion for the tabling it, or can I choose to do that?
Yeah, it's better if you do.
Okay.
Move to table.
Thank you.
The, uh, state, the twenty-twenty-six meeting dates until next month.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Abbott. So a motion was made by Mr. Wood, it was seconded by Dr. Abbott. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes to table that. Okay. And any new business to discuss? No? Okay, and then we'll move on to consent agenda. Anything to pull? Looks like we had some loan and bond applications we need to approve the minutes, and then there was some reflections from a previous PLSB hearing.
We have a question about the reflections. Is that a normal thing for us to review slash approve?
They're on the consent every month, whenever we have.
Reflections are?
If we have ordered them, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, and then we should.
I guess they haven't stood out, maybe.
Understandably, but there are some months, there's a lot, so. Um, but yes, they're always on consent if we have ordered them, and you're available to read them. So, I just need a motion to approve the consent unless there's anything to be pulled.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Hunter to approve consent. For a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Peacock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, we want to take like a two, three-minute break, let her clear her stuff, and we'll come back for board reports. We're in recess. Come back at like two twenty-five-ish. Ten twenty-five, sorry. Two. 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 Okay. 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 All right. Yeah, we just keep losing people. I'm going to go back whenever he gets back. So we'll. Yes, she did. Thank you. I did. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I'm going to leave it up. All right, we will call back to order at ten thirty-four. I'm going to go ahead and move public comment up. Um, Mr. Newton, are you ready for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Just a reminder, we'll keep it to three minutes. We would ask you to.
Madam Chairman, Secretary Oliva, members of the board, my name is Gary Newton. I'm with Arkansas Learns. And it's fitting today that we had the resolution about school boards. Because yesterday was the filing period close for the current or the next school board election. That election will elect more school board members than any time in Arkansas history because it will be in the preferential primary. That was a result of Act 503 in the last session. Also passed in the last session was Act 120 by Senator Jane English and Representative Keith Brooks. Act 120 requires that every school board lists on its website timely minutes, timely agendas, board names, board email addresses, board positions, and terms of office. A cursory review of every school district website in September showed that only thirty percent were complying with that new law. A review last week of every school district website in Arkansas found that over fifty percent were now complying. The problem is, we just had a closing date for election, and there are many districts all over this state that have no idea who is serving on the school board, nor when their terms expire. We use Quitman as an example. Quitman does not have its school board member terms on the site. They simply said six-year terms, which is not legal. They don't get six-year terms until there's an election. There was no way for the people of Quitman to know who was running for election. We deduced because we found that two ran in 2024 for four-year terms, that their terms would expire in 2028. Thus, they would be up for election then, which meant the remaining three members would be up in 2026. We knew who those were, but it all came from deducing and essentially being sleuths to find out who's running. So my encouragement for your consideration and for even the department's consideration, where do the people turn for enforcement of very good laws that are passed? Should the burden fall on individuals to bear the expense of filing suit simply to get their representative governments to follow the law? We were successful in convincing the Pine Bluff School District to open up its election to four instead of three candidates because they wholly misstated the law on their website. And it took the action of sponsors of the actual act communicating with the district and with the district's council to eighty-two days after filing period collection started and five days into the filing period to say, okay, we're going to have Zone Five up for election. On Friday, they did that. And as a result, someone has now filed an incumbent for Zone Five. Had they not, they would have missed the 2026 election. So I share all of that because that is a really good law for transparency. And yet, where do the people turn? So, think about that in your work sessions. I hope the staff considers that. It's very important. If we choose to govern our school district, or govern our school districts by elected representatives, the people must know who they are and know when they're up for election. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Mr. Wright? Or Ms. Wright, whichever one wants to go first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Arkansas State Board Member, Secretary Oliva, Chairperson Adrian Woods, and all others present. As you know, I am Charlene Wright, Pine Bluff School District stakeholder who has been afforded the opportunity to present, uh, public comments for the almost past three-plus years. After being denied, as, uh, Mr. Newton stated, the right of election integrity in the Pine Bluff School District candidate circulating petitions from August fourteenth until noon twelve for Zone Five, we stood firm that the current legislation, Act 503, would prevail. On Friday, November the seventh, five days before the filing period ended for candidates to file, an immediate release from district office was directed to the Jefferson County Clerk's Office to immediately open Zone Five for election in March 2026 due to concerns of the timing of Zone Five election and the questionable nature of the stature which concerns us. The Arkansas School Board Association provided an Act 503 election guidance that provided clarity for elections in 2026 and 2028. For four months, our community engagement, communication was limited to three-minute public comments, emails, ethics complaints, lack of transparency, which included media broadcasts instead of superintendent's updates on the election during board meetings or a community for- forum. Nevertheless, since Friday, November the seventh, thanks to Arkansas Learns, Attorney General Griffin, Senator Representative McKenzie, and collaboration with Pine Bluff School District councils made it possible for Zone Five to be up for election in March twenty-sixth as mandated by Act 506. As one of the concerned stakeholders for the Pine Bluff School District, I proudly stand here today and report that all four districts, as mandated by Act 503, had representation of candidates in Zone One, Two, Three, and Five at the close of the filing period on yesterday. Thank you for allowing me public comment, and we did persevere faithfully as we have been coming here today. We apologize for the lateness, but we had a lot of things going on. I appreciate you all, and we still will persevere for the Pine Bluff School District. I am a product of it. And I proudly gave back twenty-eight, I'd say thirty years of service, and I thought I was through. But the Lord had other plans for me. He's not through, and I, you would probably see me still coming here, persevering for the Pine Bluff School District.
Thank you.
I hope so.
We'll miss you if you're not here every month. All right, Mr. Wright?
Good morning, Arkansas State Board Members, Secretary Oliva, Chairperson Adrian Woods, all the others present. I am Julius Wright, Pine Bluff School District stakeholder. I appreciate the opportunity to present public comment. It is with deep regret our Pine Bluff School District has a letter grade of F. Keeping abreast with present, recent publications and media, the Arkansas Department of Education has planned for working with districts with letter grades of F. We would like for ADE to consider certain mitigation factors. Our district failure is directly linked to our current leadership, who has been with our district for more than five years prior to the release to local control. The Delaware School District prior to annexation, and there has been no improvement. Please include in your consideration that Pine Bluff School District was denied our right to a democratically elected board who could have perhaps advertised and hired a turnaround superintendent similar to Little Rock School District to ensure positive student outcomes with a letter grade of C as well as the election of all seven board members. Dr. Wright admit, there is more work to be done. We have petitioned you for our democratically elected board and the election of all seven board members for the past two-plus year since our turn to local control. And feels that our democratic decision and engagement could have made a difference instead of defying the law stating for continuity. Again, thank you for allowing me to have public comments.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to reports. Um, is Ms. Wilcoxen gone? She's, she couldn't, okay. We've made comment, or contact? Okay, good deal. Um, all right, then we'll move on to Secretaries' report.
Sure. So the first thing I'd like to do is, um, ask Sheila Whitlow to come up and do an update on, I want to say it was Lee County. There's so many different districts we're working with because they're coming at the end of their tenure, and we need to start adopting a plan to establish, um, releasing them from out from under state board authority and move towards limited authority so that we can make sure that that program or that district's self-sustaining. So I'd ask Ms. Whitlow to kind of present an update and a timeline.
So, so it is exciting for me. When I, when I started this role, um, as working with our districts, uh, Lee County was my first district to visit. And so, to be able to come to you today and share, there, there, there are great things happening in Lee County, and, and I talked to you briefly about that, but to think back on what it was like in 2017 and, and look at it now, I, is, is, it's exciting. And it, I'm happy to, to, um, to say that the work that's being done is, is good work. Lots more work to go. Absolutely, we're continuing this, but we're on a positive trajectory in that. So that's, that's exciting to be able to share that with you. So, um, I guess I need to get my clicker here. So just briefly go over the timeline with you, um, to share where we are. Uh, when we start, when we went into Lee County, it was in 2019, and it was probationary for some standards violations. So we, um, are now at twenty twenty-six on, in May. They will be, uh, finishing their window of the five-year time period of being under state authority. During that time, they were released from fiscal distress, and, um, and we had some changes in superintendency. We have some stability in superintendency now with Dr. Michael Stone, who is, he had formerly been at North Little Rock School District. He's from Marianna, and he's a graduate of, of Lee. So he has a vested interest in the district, and so he is starting his fourth year there. So, it's gone by very quickly. When you're my age, those, those days, those go by fast. So, um, just something to celebrate for sure is looking at enrollment trends. We, we're, we're not seeing a lot of enrollment, um, increasing in some of our areas, but we definitely celebrate that at Lee. So, uh, students are coming back to Lee County. And so that's a, that's definitely something to celebrate. Want to share with you too that, uh, the Joint Education Committee was onsite at Lee this, I guess, last month? Secretary Oliva, was that correct? And they were able to have students share some of the partnerships with the ACC. They, uh, we were able to visit classrooms, and some positive comments came from that visit. Did, did you have anything you wanted to share from the visit?
Well, one, it's just, it's great to be out in the Delta and spotlight a school that's showing improvement in student learning. And, you know, when, when we look at our accountability system and we're measuring whether or not students are at grade level, are they showing growth? Is the lowest quartile showing growth? Are students graduating success-ready? Um, this is a district that's proven that they can. And, you know, when, when we even put the task to school districts about making sure that students have an opportunity to earn advanced credit while in middle school or even earn associate's degree while, while in high school, they figured it out. And I want to say last year, they graduated about two or three seniors with their associate's degree at, at the same time in high school. And I want to say they have about ten more students enrolled this year. So, when, when we put out these expectations that our students can, they, they've not only embraced it, they're excelling at it. And then to be able to host a, a committee meeting there and, and share with the legislature some of the innovative things that are happening, um, in, in a district like Lee is, is exciting.
Thank you. I also just added a few bullets of things that we, we, we're excited about because we've worked hard on building a strong special ed department, and we were able to fully staff it this year and have a new LEA supervisor. Some of my, from my team is closely working with them and, and coaching and working with that new LEA supervisor. They're continuing the support for teachers, and, and I do want to, to really commend the, the team from Learning Services and the support that they've provided onsite, especially at the elementary school at Anna Strong. We had a literacy coach there from. We had a, a literacy coach there from the beginning and working so closely with them. And we were, we've had labs, Dr. Prud have, have had labs there, and I've been able to host other literacy coaches to come in and visit classrooms and, and witness that, that as well. Um and then of, of course, want to talk about Anna Strong Learning Academy. They, they have a C rating, and this, what last year simulated grade was a C, and this year's a C. So uh we, we definitely celebrate that, and the district has a D rating right now. Our um high school, we have work to do, and, and we're, we're leaning into that. And we know that there have been some, there's some areas of, of weakness that, that we needed to, to work on, definitely struggling with teacher stability. But we, we've had some considerable turnover in the, in the core areas. But right now, we have, all those positions are filled. We have coaches. He has, has actually um an external partner that's providing direct support to the principal there and the leaders in that building. So there's, there is a plan for continuing the work and continuing that positive trajectory. And what we're seeing with the students that are coming into the high school is they're more prepared, right, for the grade-level instruction. And so we're, we're seeing that, the benefits from the work that's going on at, at Anna Strong as well. So uh we've talked about this, I think the last couple of times that I've met and talked about Lee County is that it was, it's time for, for us to think about an advisory board and, and to get to work on that. And so we were able to uh conduct interviews. We had uh nine interviews last, last month? Last, it was October. So Mr. Anderson, would you like to share anything about, about that process?
Oh sure. You know, I was very impressed with interviewing the process. And most importantly, I was uh very impressed with the uh board that was put together to do the interviewing. You know, for any process to be respected, it has to be very clean and objective. And I seen just that in that process. Very, a lot of diversity in the group. Uh you had uh faith-based, uh private sector, nonprofit, had a lot of experience. And uh you also had uh someone in there that, you know, hit, hit the ground running, boosted ground running, and a lot of energy. I was very impressed with what I seen, and I appreciate the opportunity to be part of that. And uh I do see a lot of positive uh things in place in the future of Lee County.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that, and thank you for taking the lead on that, we appreciate it. So we do have, um we're ready to notify uh the, the ones that were scored the highest, and those have been presented to Secretary Olivia and to Stacy Smith, and so that should. This is my favorite thing when I was a teacher during, during testing, that's when that would happen. They're going weedy right outside my window, right? So that's just, I just wanted to keep you informed and not let you know that we are ready to, to notify them. And um we, we have some dates selected for some training. So we're going to make sure that they are trained on the finances, roles, responsibilities, just running in a meeting. And was, I was extremely excited about the interest in it. I visited with each of the, the applicants, and, and they are, they are definitely supporters of the district, uh very knowledgeable, and um I feel like we've got a, a good group that, first of all, the good group that did the interviews, and then, and then they came up with some, some wonderful candidates for this role.
Any questions? I have a question.
No.
So uh, uh congratulations for getting to this point. It's a big deal, and I'm so glad to know that there's so many good candidates out there.
Right.
Always encouraging. So we're going to see the advisory board. And then, like, can you just walk me through how we get to all the way till the end where there is a fully elected board?
Okay, yes, and I.
Do we have that mapped out?
Yes, we do, not that, we've been working with legal.
Did I? Did I miss it?
No, no, you haven't.
Also, I want to apologize for walking out in the middle of what you were doing. I just couldn't concentrate.
Um good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Daniel Schultz. Uh and, and as uh. Assistant Commissioner Whitlow. Those commissioners always trick me. Um so basically, uh there's advisory board, which is kind of a process of standing up people that are, are eligible for you to appoint when the time comes to, or you know, if you so choose. Uh the advisory board would sort of take the helm, and, and at that point, the, the board, when, when you decide to release them and appoint those members, then they would take over. Essentially, they would be under local control. And I believe it's Act five oh three, was mentioned earlier in fact, clarified an issue, and it's been uh an issue that's happened before where uh it said, the law now says that after a board returns to local control, all the members will be elected at the next annual school election. There's another wrinkle, that same law restructured the, the annuals, or the, I should say, the annuals, school board election. It's a biennial election now. It used to be called the annual school election. Now, there is still an annual school election for tax issues, but the school board elections are biennial. The idea being that I think that they, they're held with the primary, get a lot of turnout. Uh so then you would release them, I believe that timeline is in May. And then the next election, because of that law, will actually be in two years. But the next election, all those people will be eligible for um the people to vote on or, or others.
Okay, so do they move from, like, will they be like limited control? As the, as advisor, I mean.
That's what we would establish now. So we, we've gone through, and we've asked people from the community to be considered, had an interviewing process. We're gonna start using them in a limited capacity until we come back and say, we have confidence that we're ready for them to be released. It would be up to the board to consider appointing those folks at that time. And then, then they would go up, and they would be released into a local control, and they, those board members would be up for election at the next cycle. So we, we're, where we're beginning now is that transition, that passing of the baton under a limited capacity, because right now, um it's us, right? It's me, and we want to start making sure that we can build capacity, and they have the abilities. It's like an interview for them until we come back and say, yeah, we have confidence in this board. If we don't have confidence in that board, then we're gonna come back with a different recommendation, because we're not gonna go backwards.
But do we have a statutory requirement to release them at, like, a certain point in time? I mean, so like, it's, it.
That, that falls in May. That's, that's five years.
That is also May. Okay. So their test drive is kind of short, okay.
And when, when they're up for election, do they all get elected at the same turn? So like, that whole school board, like, the next time there's an election, just gets completely, complete, could possibly be completely turned over, like, because they're all on the same scheduled term.
That, well, so once that full board is elected, uh after that first election, then they will be, they will draw a lot terms, so then it will be staggered out. And this, the law sets out a, a bit of a structure, and that's actually what was being referenced earlier as well.
Right, that's what I thought.
Uh but that first election, they're all up, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so one, want to thank the board for a, a great week, a great meeting today. Uh lots of great discussion, good feedback. Um as we go through these processes, we're, we're gonna get things right, and we're gonna, and be transparent and include stakeholder input. Just want to thank Ross and his team for spotlighting those students today. Um it's so, so wonderful to have so many young scholars. And our president's talking about um their next steps in their journeys in lives. Want to remind the board that we are planning a scheduled workshop uh next month on the tenth, which is the day before the board meeting, where we'll be bringing in all of the school districts that received an F district letter grade. And they're gonna be presenting to the board what their action plan is on how they plan to improve um their school letter grade. And then we're gonna ask the board to consider approving those plans or not. It'll be the superintendent with the school board chair and their cooperative director. So um I, I'm really excited that we've spent a lot of time building what I think is a wonderful system that's gonna help us identify students and schools that need support, and then be able to engage in conversations with districts and leaders on how we can support them in their efforts. So um I, I anticipate a, a full meeting, just warning you on, on that tenth, because we're gonna have um every one of those districts represented, so.
How many is that?
Well, there were seven, well, if, there was eleven total F districts. There are seven traditional districts. There are some charter school um networks that received an F grade. So we're, we're working with the charter authorizing panel to do a review of their improvement plans for the charter networks. And then the traditional districts, um it'll be six of them that'll be coming to the board, because one's Blyville, and I think we already kind of know where we are with them and have a pretty good plan. Um off, off the top of my head, I might have to have Sheila um back me up, but it would be North Little Rock, Lafayette, Fordice, Crossit, um Watson Chapel, and Pine Bluff. That'll be the six that'll be coming back next month.
How long do you expect each presentation to be?
Well, we're telling them about twenty minutes, and then time for the questions from the board. So they, they need to do a full approach, and we're, and we, we want the board to ask those tough questions, right? Like, if you've had an F school, and you've had the same principal for ten years, and you plan on keeping that principal, is that a good strategy? I don't know, like, those are the types of questions that we want to be able to ask.
Are, are there plans being reviewed by the department before they present them to us?
Yes, and in fact, we've put together assurance documents. Um you've heard us do updates before around the AR app, which is our district improvement plan that looks at all of our state and federal funding. That's, that should be their blueprint for how they're gonna improve outcomes. So we're pulling those AR apps, working with those districts, and trying to figure out who's gonna be accountable for implementing which part. And we're gonna ask those districts to sign assurances on making sure that happens that we'll be presenting to the board.
Will, will we? I can't decide if this is in jest or not, but would you kindly ask them to come with more than cliches about, you know, aspiring nonsense language, but to just actually talk real details?
Yeah, and honestly, that's the conversations we've had with them.
Yeah, good.
And you know, and a lot of the districts, you know, which I think is encouraging, realized already that they had issues, so they've reorganized district offices. They've made administrative changes. They've reassigned teachers. I said, that's what our board wants to hear, that, that you, you have a plan and you're implementing it. Um I, I agree with you. Um I'm not a, a big proponent of aspirational language. We need obtainable language. We need realistic goals, and we need to take actions that are appropriate. And uh I, I said yesterday at, at the, at the board workshop, but failure stops today, right? Where, like, we, we've got districts that have allowed schools to fail generations of students. And I think when we ask questions as a board, we need to know what the plan is for that school. Or do we need to close these schools? And start reassigning these students to highly effective teachers in other schools that are higher performing? We, we can't just sit idle on our hands saying, the adults in that system have it figured out. Now, I, I have confidence that we got a good adults in those systems, but if we're failing generations of students, then at some point, maybe we need to take some of the decision-making ability away from the adults that are showing that they're making poor decisions. And that's why we're asking them to share their plans. And it's, it's not a punitive measure, it's how are we all rowing in the same direction? And that's gonna put onus on us, what we value, monitor, and support. It's gonna put the onus on the district to make sure their resources, tools are aligned to improving classrooms. And it's gonna put onus on the cooperatives who are there to be those direct support organizations. So that, that's the, the point of the exercise.
One last thing.
Sure.
We'll see how December goes, but I might, would also be interested in the same thing from D school districts.
Mm-hmm.
D is not a whole lot better.
No, and um I, I completely concur. We, we, we started with F districts, and, and we, we actually kind of are really looking at two highways, right? That have a bunch of intersections. Because we have B districts with F schools, right? So like, we need to know what those plans are too. We need to know what the plans are for D districts. I, I, I'm all about local control, providing flexibility and autonomy, especially for our A districts, our high-performing districts. If it's working, great. If we're failing, then we need to have a deeper conversation. So yes, I, I think this is step one into some ongoing conversations.
Thank you for organizing that.
If we've got an F school, it's been F school for several years, what's the, remind me again of the criteria for state takeover? Or are we talking about another criteria that maybe they don't meet those state takeover criteria, but they do need more intervention from the state?
So I, I, I think that's a great question, and that's what we're really establishing now, is like, what is our role in making sure that districts um are doing what they're supposed to do? Because we, I, I think, I speak for most of us, we don't want to have to take over districts, right? We, we should see this coming and provide the right supports and interventions before it gets to that point. I think Blyville is a good example of the district saw some problems, or the state saw some problems. We worked with the district, we, ongoing for over years, said, these are the things we need to do. We provided update to the board. Unfortunately, they couldn't figure it out, so we had to take action. If we look at what we did, um I think it was in Watson Chapel, we had some concerns, and we brought them to the board. The district says, we agree, we put some things in place. They're figuring it out, like, we didn't have to intervene because we just made sure that everybody's working on the appropriate targets. But at some point, if a, a school is continuing to fail, then we need to hold that district accountable. And maybe that's where we start bringing in external operators. Maybe that's where we start bringing in um more limited oversight and control of that board. But I, 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 I go back to, we have a baseline now. We, we have, for the first time as a state, established district grades. We have, I feel a lot of confidence that our accountability system reflects the learning that we expect to see in measures outputs. And step one is, let's get these plans going. As we get further in this, at some point, there needs to be a timeline. Um my, my feeling is, if they're able to continue to show growth year after year, you know, maybe they haven't exited that kind of s- school or district in need of, you know, severe improvement, but they're moving in the right direction, great. If, if we identify them as a school that's not making um progress like they should be, and they're declining, then that's when we would come to the board with a further recommendation to take more severe action.
Any other questions? Okay, what time would you like us here?
I, I think typically we do one o'clock.
Does it work?
If that's okay with you all.
Uh-oh, maybe not.
She's like, be here at eight.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to point out, I know some of the board members had a, a meeting scheduled to visit some schools on that day, on the tenth. And so I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was okay with that. Did we want to maybe look at moving the work session to the, the morning of the eleventh? Um or do you just want to leave it the tenth?
Um either one. Tenth is fine.
You sure? Okay.
Okay.
Then, then yeah, one o'clock.
One o'clock on the tenth.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else?
One o- one o'clock?
One o'clock.
On the tenth.
Do you want to do it earlier?
Uh, uh, this is an all-day pow-wow.
I'd like to get started earlier.
Well, I'm following, I, I'm trying to be respectful of y'all's side.
Yeah, I just, I, I can't imagine a school district present being less than an hour.
Okay.
I mean, if they get twenty minutes.
So do you want to start at nine?
I wouldn't suggest that. That'd be, I would think.
Is that, if that works with the board.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just go down on the ninth, yeah.
We can schedule.
Yeah. All right.
I want to have plenty of time to have conversations.
All right, then we will be here at nine o'clock on the tenth. We're not taking any action that day, that's just our.
That'll be the workshop.
And then on the eleventh, we'll approve all of these plans.
Yeah, we'll have, so the hope is, we, we feel pretty confident in the plan that's being presented in the assurance documents, and we'd probably have those on consent unless they get pulled for action on a specific one to be formally approved by the board. Because then that puts responsibility in our agency for implementation as well.
Okay. All right. There's nothing further? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. White, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.